Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, June 26. We'll call to order at 6:12 PM. Move, we go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding Fire Chief Philip Wonka and Chief of Police Robert Holst. We will return to regular session immediately following. Second. All those in favor, roll call vote. Brian Lee called roll.
Aye, William Memberry.
Stephen Bastarash?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Select Board meeting, continuing regular session at 6:30 PM. Surplus equipment request, School Department, oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a motion that we ratify the Fire Chief's contract. Do you want dates on that, or any specifics? From June, from June 30, 20, I'm sorry, July 1, 2024, 2023, oh my God. We start over. Make a motion that we ratify the Fire Chief's contract effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I left him with Bill, he'll sign. We'll just pass it down and do it now while we're here. While he starts on that, surplus equipment request, School Department, tilt skillet, third read.
No concerns with that.
And we discussed putting it out as is, where it is.
For public auction.
Take it yourself. If not, we'll
Scrap it.
Scrap it for metal.
Yep.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to deem the tilt skillet as surplus property and offered to for auction, and if no takers, scrapped for metal value.
All right, well, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to pass over the review of the hazardous communication policy draft, fourth read. We'll carry that in our next July meeting. We'll come back to the Assistant Treasurer position when the treasurer's here. Review of meeting minutes. March 1, 2021, May 3, 2021, and November 29, 2021.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes as of March 1, 2021, May 3, 2021, November 29, 2021, as written.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll pass over January 3, 10, and June 21st? Or did we have, no, we had one of those.
You have June 21st, I was going to say, we had a supplemental. Make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, June 21, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Review of the equipment operator, building maintenance, labor position description. Come on up, sir. And so this is the position that Thomas just vacated officially. Doesn't sound very good.
Was promoted out of?
Yeah.
It was just a few minor changes that were in here. Pretty much it's the same thing as what we did in the other job descriptions. And added in, I think there was a spot where we added in, could answer to the foreman in the absence of the superintendent's position.
I have no concerns with the job description. Is there any recommendation on the grade level? By you?
Well, right now it falls into the D category. And I don't know how, usually we start in the one to three range.
Yep.
Well, are we talking about
Are you talking about the job description?
Yeah, because it's, because it has the grade level.
Well, no, I'm asking Bill, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the grade of the job description? Okay, yeah, so it's D.
It's a D grade.
And I don't think there's any proposal to change that currently.
Correct.
No.
It's staying in the D.
Just a grade, yep.
Okay.
And we put CPR and first aid preferred.
Yes.
But did we determine But did we determine that was required to achieve within, in our last?
I was reading that, and I ca, I did not go back to any, uh.
What we did in the foremans and what the discussion was?
Yeah, I was trying to go, I was trying to recall if we set a timeframe. I know we had talked about setting one.
Did we leave it alone in the job description and said we'd come back to it, and we've talked with you about it, but I don't know that we've made any math change yet.
We're scheduling those trainings for this fall, just like you asked.
Right, okay.
Was it first aid CPR?
Yes.
I, I have an instructor for, uh, town employees.
I had mentioned that he should check, connect with you, cuz we probably have one. But we haven't gone back and made, like, the math change to job descriptions to say that, right?
Correct.
I don't think so, I think they've all.
Cuz we left them as is, cuz we hadn't had the conversation with you, we have since and have started the process, but didn't put it in effect as mandatory. I mean, if that's what we're doing, seems like it, we're reviewing this one, or we can come back to them all later, I don't know which way you guys wanna go.
What if it was easier for you all?
I'm assuming we'd put some language where it was, uh, obtain within, if not already. It's a preferred qualification, but it's not required, but it is required to get it. Must obtain and maintain, and/or maintain.
Yeah, I think we were throwing out anywhere from 90 days to a year, you know?
Yeah, I don't think there was a set timeframe.
No, and that's where we sort of left it, we didn't come up with what was a reasonable timeframe.
Chief Wonka? What do you think, we're gonna put this in a job description and say they must either maintain or obtain if they don't have CPR, first aid? What do you think is a reasonable amount of time to allow for that to happen? We talking three months, six months, a year? What's a reasonable amount of scheduling time?
I, I would think six months would be acceptable, um, and then, you know, if we're having trouble scheduling instructor.
We can always discretion.
Yeah, discretion on that.
CPR is, um, I believe that one expires every, every, it's either two or four years.
I think it used to be two.
Yeah, I think it's still true.
Yeah, okay. So, if we did, I mean, any concerns with six months?
No, not at all. And what we would do, we would just fall under the renewal at the same time at the fire department does, even though if it's six months prior to, that way it's all, all done in one class.
Right.
Yeah, to get aligned and then continue, yeah, okay.
I don't care if we wanna make an amendment on that this time, or if you just wanna amend them all in the future at one, you know, one motion, one time, all descriptions, it doesn't matter, either way. I'm fine with the way it reads now.
Make, makes sense to do it in the future, amend them all to.
We'll just capture that.
Read the same date.
We'll look at all the ones that we need to change, and we can change them all at one time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like to, you have more questions?
I think under special requirements, under the class B, the first bullet, it says, or will obtain, must obtain, I think, right? This isn't a will, this is a, I mean, I know it's semantics a little bit, but I spend too much time with Cory, I think. I would, I would recommend we change that to must, or shall, which is one of those more definitive words.
If you're talking about legal, the word's gonna be shall.
Must or shall, yeah, shall is, yeah. Are we good with shall?
It's fine.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns?
None.
Bring it for another read, or a motion as amended?
There were so few amendments to it, mostly clerical, I'm fine with moving it tonight, if you are.
I as well.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the equipment operator, building maintenance, labor, uh, job description as amended, effective, uh, June 26, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we have a recommendation.
So along with that comes a recommendation, uh, for Cody Pease to move into that position. He's been with us since two, 2023, so I'm sorry, 21, uh, August 17th, 2021. Uh, he has all his voice and license that are required for this, he's had them, he is CPR and first aid responder certified. He's done pretty much any, any of the jobs with us, whether it's a big project, small projects, including the one on mountain road. Catch base, injury players, uh, culverts, opening, closing graves, on his own. Yeah, I, he's, he's an excellent fit, willing to learn, and what he doesn't learn, he's willing to, and, uh, he's come a long way in a couple of years. So with this, just like we did for Thomas, um, like, to be able to send him to the CDL training school. Give him six months to get it, just like we did Thomas. Uh, of course, the cost has gone up on that, just like everything else. Just shy of $3,100 right now, it's a 40-hour course, called down there today, they're scheduling, scheduling into July now, uh, their middle of July is almost filled up right now, so most likely it'll probably be like a late August, early September. Cody already has vacations scheduled in August, and they're doing Thursday, Friday classes only, it's not a Monday through Friday anymore.
So what is it, like, three weeks?
Yeah. Yeah. And he has a scheduled date for July 10th for his permit.
The $3,100, you'll have that in, in your budget?
Yes.
I figured.
Unless somebody wants to give out donations.
Were you laughing?
I'll take it out of my budget.
Comments, questions, concerns?
No concern.
I had no concerns with it, it, it seems like a logical move, um, you know?
Yes, it does.
From within, in-house move. It's typical, I'm glad we have somebody that fits the bill, that you are comfortable, you know, recommending to move forward, I have no concerns with it.
Thank you.
No concerns either. So, grade D. Now we're gonna set a step.
Well, which, which is gonna change.
Potentially irrelevant tonight, in some ways, but, but.
So it's why, so I ask for an effective July 1st, knowing where we're at with the fiscal year.
Yeah.
And knowing that nobody knows what the changes would be tonight, I think it's kinda hard right now before the next meeting.
I don't wanna presume, but I expect that based on all the conversations so far, there's been consensus that the table will change.
Yeah, the table, I think the table will change.
And a step one then will not be the same, but.
Correct. So.
It's gonna be July 1st, so it's probably irrelevant, step one today will be a step one with whatever gets determined.
Whatever the new table is, I'm wondering if we just hold off, just table this for.
Oh, until later tonight?
A half hour, an hour until we, until we see what happens with the table, and then we at least know what we can fill in for a, uh.
Oh, and then set it then?
A step and, a step and rate, whatever that step and rate is, if we come to a determination as a collective group and, and adopt a table.
Because whatever we say will be wrong right now.
Correct. Cuz we're just setting it to then just change it again anyways, it won't matter, it's irrelevant.
Okay. Works for me.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
That starts at seven, and we'll have that discussion.
I was just wondering how long that's going to take, and if Glenn has something else tonight, or?
I do, I have other stuff tonight, but I'll be around till the end.
Okay.
I would say, if we think it's gonna be quick, once we've come to a decision, assuming we do a joint meeting on the table, we can take a moment to make a motion and clear that one up.
Yeah.
And then continue on with the other joint discussion.
Yep.
Okay.
To get it done.
Yeah.
No need to wait.
Yeah.
Once, once that's all.
I mean, we can set a, and we could do a, a grade step and rate now, and it just will default change, doesn't really, it's irrelevant, um, I mean, so.
Less paperwork if you wait, right?
Well, it's just cleaner. You know what the, you know what the step grade and, and rate is.
Yeah, we can wait.
That are, that's real, not just a, a current FY23.
I'm gonna recommend we still say tentatively, because we'll let the finance team finalize everything in the end, but we'll, we'll give numbers to it, but we can just say, you know? I think, I think we're there within a penny or two.
Correct, there's always a rounding error.
There is. That math. Okay, so we'll.
We'll just table that.
Table that until after the wage discussion?
Yep.
In terms of making any appointment or motion for, uh, for setting that promotion rate? Anything else on that topic, no?
No.
Review of the highway plow truck procurement.
So after, after annual town meeting, um, I sat down with Brian, we specked up the truck, we sent it out through the state contract, and seven vendors, I believe?
Four.
Four, four vendors, I believe, four, some of them were owned by the same company, that's what we found out afterwards. Uh, we, we had one, one response, uh, from Colonial Ford and J.C. Madigan for the upfitting part of it. And under budget, we had 125,000, uh, was approved for it, and it came in at 113, 809. They don't even have pricing for the 2024 models yet, and now the ordering, order bank won't even open until probably somewhere around the second week of July. So then they won't even have prices until then. So in this price, they put in a $6,000 escalator for a model year change. In the build, so we got a base price of $47,325 just for the cabin chassis, and additional $57,488 for the build. This is pretty much identical to the last truck, just not the toolbox behind the cab. So, when we found out he was the only, uh, responder, I gave him a call on Thursday to let him know that, yes, sir, I think our due date was June 12th.
Correct.
I think is what it was. Told him that we hadn't forgot about him, there's been a lot of town business stuff going on, uh, let him know that we're meeting with the board tonight, and that he was the only responder. So I asked him for any further update, and the updates were the same. Asked if we were stuck on the color, because they just had a trailer of 2023 cabin chassis come in. Fits the same spec as the one that we were looking for, uh, just that it's in the green that we have had in the fleet for years. The one that we had purchased last year was blue, because they could not get any, and it was a 2020 leftover that was found on the lot after two years. So Brian had had me ask what it would take to paint the truck blue, so it's about a three to five week wait time, and an additional $7,500 for the paint. Or we probably say, could save maybe $1,500 if we waited, depending on what the upcharge was from a 23 to 24 model. Right now, they don't even have an expected delivery date if it was a 24, cuz they're still receiving 23s for builds from last year also. So, it could be springtime, it could be next summer, it could be late fall, they don't, they're not putting dates on them yet. So we have a couple of options. Wait and go what was as spec with no timeframe. They have one on the lot that they have our name on it, on hold until after tonight's meeting. Pay to have it painted, uh, which would be $7,500 more than what, what this price, this 47, 325 is. So like 54 something, 54 and change.
Do you have a recommendation?
Brian and I had spoke about this, and yes, as we want everything probably to stay uniform, um, right now, we have only one truck that's blue. If we wait, if we keep everything green and move forward to green the way we're going, then when that one comes around, then it goes back to green. If you all want them blue, to stay blue, then this truck is a sure thing in a quicker build than waiting to order one. What would you like to see driving up and down your roads?
Well, there wouldn't be a request for a, a truck if you didn't need one, so.
Correct.
I, I suspect it's a no-brainer that we go with the recommendation of, of, um, what's on the lot, and get it painted and ready to go. Sooner we get it on the road, the better it will be for, for you, so.
So we have one blue and how many green today?
We have one blue and four greens.
Four greens, huh?
Do we, do we really care if it's blue?
I don't care.
I mean, for six, for $6,000, $7,000, do we care?
I don't.
I'd rather just save it.
I don't care if they're the same color or not. I look at some towns, and, you know, they have a, a white truck, a blue truck, a gray truck. As long as there's an emblem on the side, and it tells you what town it's from, and you, it's marked up properly.
Oh, he's all still blue, so.
As long as it's gonna take care of the roads and do the work it needs to do.
It'll still plow, it'll still, uh, do everything it needs to do, no matter if it's dark green or dark blue. Save the 7,500 bucks.
So, are you gonna come back with an updated one, or we gonna make a motion based on what we heard tonight?
I just wanna double-check the numbers, so you're saying the one that's currently available?
Be 109, 258. At 44 cents.
How about not to exceed 1/10? Just to. Yep.
How many cents was that?
44.
That's minus the 7,500?
No, the seven, the 7,500 was on top of, on top of this price.
Didn't sound like there was any concerns with that.
I don't have any concerns.
I'll make a motion, we award the procurement for the Ford F-550 plow truck to Colonial Ford of Marlboro, Mass., 013, 1752, and amount not to exceed $110,000, even for a 2023 model year. Adjusted from the original spec, and in green, not blue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And move that we authorize Brian Smith to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Was that the last one you had on tonight?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Before you get settled, Johnny, might as well come on up, uh, we'll jump into review of the proposed revision to the assistant treasurer's job description. I was trying to catch you before you actually got comfortable. Thank you for joining us tonight. So we saw the memo and the updated job description last meeting. Quickly. Any questions about the changes? It's currently a C, grade C?
Correct, yep.
The supervisor responsibility, is that just a, I mean, it's theoretical at this point, but, but that job level would.
Correct, yep.
The office currently has a vacancy in the clerk position, but the office used to have a, a third position.
Questions? How long has Jean been with us?
She's been with her, in this role, over five years.
And what is her current education?
I actually, I don't know. Their qualifications. She was in the position when I started, so I'm not quite sure. Brian, do you know?
No. Okay, cool.
The only thing I'm looking for in here is typically if we're a grade D, oftentimes we're looking for them to have the ability to step in if their supervisor's not around, but there's no, there's no language to that in here.
Sorry, that, yeah, that definitely should be added, but she absolutely does.
Assume the, the role in your absence.
Well, I think I actually, in the job description, I think I did.
Unless I'm missing it.
On the very end, assumes, assumes my duties when I'm not in the office.
Oh, it's under essential functions.
Okay.
15. Okay, I looked right over it. That's, that's one of the pieces I was looking for and it's one of the new added ones.
Am I correct in that individuals who are required to be bonded, are they required to do that themselves?
Yes, she's required. She's required to be bonded, yep.
What, what cost is that?
I think it's a couple.
No bond?
Yeah.
And it's a few hundred dollars per employee.
Yeah.
And our office handles that for all the employees that need to be bonded.
I just looked back at a couple others for that, quick standing language. It looks like we've always been putting it in essential functions, not in upper section, which I didn't think was the case, but I can't find it anywhere except essential functions in our other.
About assuming the role.
Yeah, and our other, like, in the second.
Yep.
Second command type roles. I don't have any concerns with it.
Thank you.
No?
No? Who would want if you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the assistant treasurer position as amended with a grade level of D.
Second?
Effective, effective date of 6/26/2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, it is 7:03. I will call the joint meeting with the capital planning committee and the finance committee to order.
Not on, not on the chairs?
Are you really?
And now Otis, Otis has to change now.
Oh, goodness. And we were just talking before the meeting about taking gelada, put some effort into a little better layout, a little clearer we need to. We good, sir? Okay, I'll give you a minute. Okay. Thank you. So we'll start with continuing the discussion regarding wage adjustments for FY24. So last meeting, we kind of came away with the guidance that we were looking to see what a 2% base wage and 3% step change with the revised 10-step table, as well as a 4% base with a 3% step change. And confirm that the estimated overall impacts that Scott and I had run through quickly on the fly were, were generally accurate. And we received that data from the treasurer.
So if you're ready for.
Yep, please.
Input. There was a memo, thank you, Brian, for putting together the memo that captures the work that's been done. I had mentioned at the last discussion of this, you know, the, the difference in the, the potential cost to the two different tables. My only concern is, and so I'll, I'll start the conversation by looking back at the comparative throughout the county, I'm actually leaning in favor of the 4% base wage adjustment because it does put us in a, a position where it's very advantageous to keep people here long term, as opposed to just getting them in for the first few years and then they find somewhere else to go. I just want to make sure that we have the ability to fund it. And these are estimates, these are not actual, you know, dollar amounts. But it does come up, you know, on, on an estimate, a hair shy for, for the first fiscal year. Obviously, we would build it in for 25 and beyond, but if we're making this change now, after we've done the annual town meeting for '24, if we make these changes effective July 1, we just have to make sure that we can adjust on the fly with our own internal budget to make sure we can accomplish that. That's my only concern, is the one year finding the, the funding source internally to, to get there. And, you know, if we think we can, if we think we can pinch a little bit off of somewhere else and make those changes, I think it, it makes sense to put the money in the wages where it needs to be. If you go back to several years ago, we sat, I think it was downstairs at the town hall and talked about our goal was to make sure that we are attracting new talent that wants to be here, incentivizing people to stay here for longevity and be competitive in the upper echelon of what the county is offering. That table gets it there.
Thoughts, comments?
I saw it, 2%, 4%, I didn't see 3, so it's somewhere in the, somewhere in the middle, but it's okay. But my question about the 4%, and I agree with everything you said, I want good people to come here, they want, just want to stay here. I, I know, on that side of the coin, I'm right with you. On the other side of the coin, it was mentioned, I don't have anything to back it up, it was mentioned that somebody might be getting a 20% increase, I don't know anybody that would get a 20% increase anywhere, maybe that's not the case. Do you know roughly with the, the combination of the, of the wage base and the step change, will people be getting a 20% raise?
The, the minimum based on doing this, I can check back to the list, is basically 3 plus, 3 plus 4. Like, if we jump in two steps, so 3% each for steps and then 4% for the base, basically gives you 10% is the minimum. However, it compounds because we adjusted each step 3% from 2%. So the higher you are in the new steps, the more, you know, they're going to get 1% more for each additional step that they're already there because of the new table, right? So it's not exactly that math, but if someone was at, you know, a step 10, they're going to get 9 or 10% plus the 10%. Because they've, because it compounds, but.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, when we talk about the net effect of what somebody might see, all of these employees are going to see those steps anyways. So by doing a step adjustment, if we're saying in FY24, we want to, we want to move people further down in steps and we, it's their money that they're going to get eventually over a 10-year, you know, step increase, it's allowing them to get it faster because the need of that increase in, you know, inflation that everybody had been talking about, those steps were going to be incurred by the town regardless. It's allowing the person to access it one year earlier. So instead of waiting another year to see FY25's step, they're getting 24 and 25, it just moves them down the table faster. The net result is, over a 10-year period, is pennies on the dollar, when it, when you talk about the net effect to the town, we're just going to see it earlier. If you average this out over 11 years, it would be a couple thousand dollars difference, you know, annually. It's just allowing them to access it sooner. It gives the net effect and the feel to alleviate the burden that we're all feeling when you go to buy stuff now. And I think that's what we're looking for.
That explanation satisfies me between what you both said. And hopefully it'll satisfy taxpayers too, because everybody's paying more when you go to the store, whatever store you go to. And in these times, telling somebody, oh, you get 2%, it's like sending them backwards three steps. So I'm in favor of what you, what you're proposing.
I mean, the, the table change of a 4% with 3% steps, that's the change we're looking at. Where we place people is not a, that's a, that's a budgetary and placement change that we do here, the three of us look at and say, we want to move people on the steps, we want to change their grade, we want to adjust the, the, you know, a promotion, a, a job description. It got lumped into the same conversation, just to show that the net effect of what it might be, but the table change is really what we're looking at. Where people get placed on that was an idea that the three of us had come up with to say, how do we keep some similarity in movement? How do we see a net effect that people will realize in FY24 that'll help, help offset? So just want clarity on that.
Just a question. You were talking about over 10 years, the difference would be pennies on the dollar. We're, we're not going to be evaluating this every 10 years though, right?
No.
We're going to be front loading it and then front loading it again when we evaluate it again in four or five years?
We have no idea what we would do for adjustments in four or five years.
We wouldn't go down though.
Well, no, I mean, nobody goes down.
Right, but I just.
Yeah.
You mentioned 10 years and I'm thinking it's.
Well, only because we're talking about a 10-step. So, you know, you're talking about a 10-steps. If this were to play out for 10 steps, the person that was going to be on a step five, going to a six, but instead we're talking about potentially moving them to a seven, right? They're going to cap out faster, one year faster, so they won't have that extra step because they got it this year instead of at the end of their career. They're getting it sooner, they're just moving down the table faster. That's why I said, you know, either way, if you did a double step this year for everybody, they would reach that same mile marker in nine years instead of 10 years. If you didn't do the double step and you waited that 10th year, they were going to hit that mile marker anyways. Whatever the table looks like, if we reevaluate it in seven, that mile marker is still going to be the same. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
Either, either way, they're going to get a step every single year. We can't, you know, we don't, we don't have mechanisms to stop them from getting steps. Their years of service allows them that opportunity. We're just expediting within the own, within the table that we're, we've created to allow them to see, to realize that one year sooner.
And I think, Ben, to your point about length of time, I know just in talking about it in the past, the idea was not reviewing it again for a minimum of five years, but definitely, you know, unless something drastic change in the economy, of course, but ideally reviewing it in seven. So we do have that kind of.
The five to seven.
Plan that within that five to seven, this will, in its entirety, will be looked at again.
Just so, just to, for everybody listening, to be clear, that is the table, that's the job descriptions, that's the placement within there, that is how we compare to the, our fellow, our surrounding communities, but annually, we still look at base wage adjustments. You know, that's still an annual review, and I've even made the suggestion to the chair that in future years, we look at base wage adjustment in one of the first blocks of the budget discussion, not the last, because it seems like every year we discuss it at the end and it becomes what's left of the pie, rather than what do we think is a fair market rate? So, you know, just changing how we, how we view where that falls in. But that, that's for next year's budget table.
Do we ever look at the perceived value of the benefits package since?
Yes.
Especially with surrounding communities, it seems like we're usually pretty high.
We're actually.
A few months ago.
Yeah, that's, that was what started this. We looked at an entire table, we look at benefits that they're getting, what we pay for insurance versus other communities. A lot of communities are actually upping their game and increasing their value of what they're contributing. It's not, you know, it used to be everybody was 50%, 50/50, and we were 84, 85, 86. You're seeing a lot of 75s and, you know, so it's not as much of a disparity, but yes, we were looking at, when we crunched the numbers, we looked at a dollar value and looked at what that is and what that compares to as part of the discussion.
We recommend the 4% base wage adjustment with 3% step change for general government and fire department. Would that be an appropriate motion?
It would be, if you'd like it to be one.
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, is there a second? Motion failed.
It's, you know.
Different motion?
No, it's just, when you said 20%, I mean, that threw me for a loop.
So, if I can read.
There was nobody that would see it.
Let me just, let me just restate that.
That number was way off. First of all, it's 4, 3, and 3. That's what the changes we're discussing, right? What that effect is for an individual employee is based on the years they've already earned and done, what step they're on, plus two steps or whatever jump is required based on shortening the number of steps in the table. That impact is what they've already earned, right? So hypothetically, if someone's going to be a step 5 on the new table, they've earned that step. So if that means that's that many percent higher than 4, 3, 3, it's because they've already earned those steps. Just like if we, we did a 2% last year, every step got 2% and it was compounded. It started at the bottom and they add 2%, and it's really just slightly more every step you go up because it compounds. So it's compounding effects because of the way a table works and the time that they've already served, so. You know, that, that I would just caution to separate the two, and I think that's maybe what Scott was trying to get at, is really all we're doing is what we normally look at, which is the first step, and then what is the distance between? And then how, the math that works to make the full table and how that compounds over time is the nature of the table we've been using. So anything different would be proposing changing the table in another way. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's true every year. If we make a change, it's going to impact someone at a higher step differently than it impacts someone at a lower step. I go back to Dan's dollar versus percent to some degree. I mean, that's really what it is. So, the effective amount is various based on time served.
May I answer the discussion? That if, if, much of this is a consequence of going from 15 steps to 10. And if you don't make some adjustment, as, as is being suggested here, the person has been here for five, six years and they've moved up a few steps, they're going to be paying them the same as somebody who walks in the door. And that's unfair, I think. Certainly the person who's been here a few years would think it's unfair. So you've got enough to make those adjustments and bump them up a couple steps, and if that gives them an extra percentage or two, that's fair, that's where they should be. And I certainly agree, this constant turmoil of turnover, it's natural. I mean, if I work someplace, I look and see is there someplace better to give me more money and more, more benefits or I like better, but we'd like them to stay here rather than just train them and then they go off somewhere to some other town, whether it's in the county or out, that, that, we can't compare to the whole country, but you're always looking for something better. We'd like to give them enough goods so they stay here. Because it costs us money when they leave. We have to retrain and re, you know, just, whether it's the academy or wherever you have to send people, or CDL, ICE, whatever it is. I just think this is a fair thing. If you believe something else, I'm certainly willing to entertain discussion on a different motion, but we may reach a point where we'll remake the same motion. Be good if we do something to it.
I think too, it's important to note, there's kind of two separate things at play here. One is truly just looking at a base wage adjustment for this fiscal year for the employees, and the other is honoring the commitment that we made three years ago when we implemented this program, that we would review it in three years and see what works and doesn't work and make changes as necessary. So in order to keep, at least for me, in order to keep this fresh, so to speak, there was too many steps and the percentage in between the steps was just not going to be a longevity kind of thing. So changing, you know, the number and the percentage in between, I think we needed to do in order to stay competitive, to keep the employees that we have. And so I think, well, yes, our employees are going to benefit from that, there's no way around that. We couldn't make changes that are going to suffice us for the next five to seven years, but say to the employees, oh yeah, we're not going to give you any extra pay from that. So I, I do think there is two really distinct, separate things happening, that we're changing a program that we found has a few things that don't work the greatest, and so we're implementing change to fix that, and then we're looking at a base wage of adjustment for our employees for this fiscal year. And so they are kind of separate issues.
Yeah.
And that changing of the, of the scale, again, hopefully not for another five to seven years, so this year, the impact of the budget is kind of an anomaly.
Correct.
Because it just happens to be the time when we are honoring the commitments that we made.
And I checked too, Scott's right, it was a discrepancy, there's no 20%.
Yeah, there is.
Nothing's 20%.
Not, not even close.
There's some split rate because of roles and it threw it off if you, if you do it right.
Yeah.
But you know, I wanted to make sure that was not the case, and apparently it's not.
It's not, it's not.
I was, I was thinking about that whole.
It was my typo too, it was my mistake too, I, I see where it is and it was not.
Yeah.
I just, I asked the question in good conscience because the people watching the show are paying the bills.
Yes.
Nobody wants to give 20%? I don't think this does. If there's another motion, I think the, the finance committee should recommend something if you want to do something different or remake that motion, which somebody might want to do.
If you'd like to make a motion, Dan.
Well, I, I would move, I would move that we, that we recommend, because we don't decide, we just recommend, the 4% base wage adjustment with 3% step change for general government and fire department.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Any no's? Three yeses, one no, second.
Ben was the second?
Ben was the second.
Ben was the second, yeah.
One question I did want to ask you.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, um, we had discussed this at our FinCon meeting as well about the fact that our numbers jumped up this year because of inflation. Are we going to build in any kind of trigger with this that we can count on so that we know that if inflation goes up above a certain percent, we're going to be considering, not throwing this out the window, but going up and above and beyond what we've said that we were going to do?
I don't know if, I don't know if it's been discussed in this group setting, but I think after looking at this and what we did last year and just reflecting, because was it, it was our commitment, you know, three years ago to come back and see how, how the whole thing's been working, and there's clearly a handful of adjustments here. I think the other one seems to be that we need to look at whether there is a, you know, an overall adjustment needed based on inflation and those things each year. So just coming together as part of that, I think to, to what Scott was alluding to earlier, you know, he had said, can we put this on the front end of budgeting instead of the back end? I think it's a great idea. And part of that will be reviewing those, that data and deciding, is there a, an overall, you know, inflation adjuster or something like that that we need to put in that year?
A threshold maybe that we would know about?
I don't know if I'd want to deem to set one personally. I would say we just plan to do that as part of our budget kickoff reviews, is discuss it, see if we feel there's a number that something needs to get reviewed and, and go from there.
I mean, annually, when you're looking at, you know, what we used to refer to as a COLA, base wage adjustments, it takes all of those factors in play. It takes, you know, what is the current market, what is job comparisons? You can do that very quickly. It's not a full comprehensive, but part of that is what's the inflation rate in the economy, you know? And we look at that when we're looking at base wage adjustments every year, you know? To set a trigger, I have seen, seen language like that before. It gets very convoluted.
It does.
And you lock yourself in. It's, it's more of a, I see that more in collective bargaining than you do in just straight municipal employees that are non-bargaining unit.
Yeah.
Or you see that a lot at the state level, when they're looking at very large budgets and they want, you know, drivers, but that's because they're not going to, they're not going to give anything unless they hit a mark that allows them to say they're going to. It's, I don't think it's necessary because we do look at base wage adjustments annually, or at least we're, as of last year and this year, and every future year going forward, we're going to look at base wage adjustments annually anyways. I wouldn't be in favor of putting any escalator clauses in it. That's what the 3% steps are.
Right.
I mean, a step is just a guaranteed base wage adjustment if the, if the appointing authority, the select board makes no changes, anybody who's not on the top step is going to be guaranteed a 3% step. So if we're derelict in our duty and we give nothing, there is at least a 3% increase annually.
The other, the other thing, just coming, circling back to the memo before the board makes final decision here on, what we're doing was discussion about breaking out public works, or specifically highway, and buildings and grounds into its own schedule. And at the moment, that would be the, the grades that are used currently, out of the current general government, right, is the recommendation? As they are, but just those specific grades, because it doesn't utilize all the grades in general government. Is that something, anyone has concerns one way or another?
I don't have concern with it. I think you, if you can have some finite department-level tables, that's, that's fine. To have one table that spans from clerical through laborers, through, you know, rec, through everything, it just seems to be a bit overdone, overused. So having some more smaller, broken-out tables, but utilizing these same figures to start. Because you might find in years to come, the, the demand of a certain job is elevated whereas others are not, and so you don't want to be looking at just one table. It's more work on our end, but when you're looking at wage scales throughout the town, instead of having, you know, just a couple of tables, you might have four or five. But I'm okay with that.
I would agree with Scott, and I think pretty much the finance committee on that, that issue, that one issue. I, I haven't heard any good explanation as to why we would want to, to do that and what the benefit would be, so I'm quite comfortable, as it is, we were broken up in that we were going to have two unions to begin with, to, well, actually three. When you look at the school and wastewater and then police, and that's just the start. So I don't know where it's going to go in the future, and no, nobody does, but I, I would hate to see it broken out any more than it already is, which is a difficult task to, to have to negotiate with, with several different departments that are minute in size to begin with. So I, I'm in, in favor of not breaking out at all in any way at this time.
Finance have any take on that, one way or another?
Does that have a financial impact?
You don't want the finance committee, so it's really not much for us to say about it.
It's a clerical. It's not a, it's not a financial, it's a clerical. It may have finance implications in the future if one table is adjusted and another is not, if there's, you know, but that's, that's future. Nothing in this year.
I was going to say, I think it makes sense as jobs expand or change, it doesn't seem like having that permit in with general government makes sense to me. So I would be in favor of having them have their own table.
I, I agree, I, yes, it's another table, but I don't, it wasn't just keeping that straight, I, I don't think it's that big of a lift, because more of what we're doing is usually an aggregate or a specific targeted reason, so I would be okay with that as well. Other discussion on any of the above for the board? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the wage compensation tables with a 4% base wage adjustment, modifying the number of steps to 10, and incrementally increasing each step to a 3% step annually, effective July 1, 2023.
For what tables?
Uh, sorry, thank you. For the fire department and general government.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. And we could always further that conversation about, you know, splitting tables at any time, unless you want to do it now.
I have no problem doing it now while we're making changes, but that's, either way, so if you want to make a motion, let's not.
I'll make a motion, we can discuss it further if we have to. I'm going to make a motion that we create a new wage compensation schedule, effective July 1, 2024, label the highway and building and grounds, utilizing the same table format and amounts of the previously approved general government compensation schedule.
You said 2024, did you make 2023?
I did. Thank you.
And that would be by pulling out the, the grade, only the grades that we have job descriptions in those departments for?
Yeah.
I will second. Any more discussion on that change?
Yeah, I, you know, I just think it makes sense to pull them out. It's a unique department, it's finite, and it really only increases our tables from currently four tables to five tables, and it allows a, a grouping of like jobs, like descriptions on a table. So, I'm in favor of it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes. And that'll also be for July 1. And, and just as a note, what, for everyone, what we've approved is the percentages. We're going to let the financial team go through and verify that everything's right as they do their process for year-end and, and switch over. They've generally reviewed these, I'm sure they're pretty close, within a few pennies, but it's just a little footnote, there may be a little bit of rounding error somewhere in there, so these are not necessarily exact, within the penny. Anything else on wage adjustments at this point? Talked about some footnotes for next year budget cycle, which I think sound good, and we can talk about them as we get into that again. Before we continue on with other joint business, we just want to return to one that we had tabled pending this decision. So, this discussion regarding equipment operator, building maintenance labor position, and setting a, a rate and step for that promotion. Discussion around that, based on the new table?
Do we have current step?
Two, maybe?
Um, is it three as of?
Three?
The first?
Four, two. Yeah, it should be three.
So today it's a two, on the first it would be a three.
Which means on the new one that we just approved, it would be a, a one. Effective July 1.
Right.
And I think it's just-
Cause if it'd be four or less, it would jump to one.
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yep.
Sorry, I just gotta get back to my other document here. Would you like it with a dollar amount, but also, or just a grade and step? Because I know you said it's subject to verification through the financial team.
I have no preference. Do we normally, I think we just normally, well, we, we mention what it is, yeah.
We usually mention a dollar amount. I, I'll-
I mean, we can anecdotally say approximately.
Alright, I know I had asked for that to be tabled until we saw if we were able to approve a, a table. And I just think it makes sense to make this effective July 1 and do all the changes on the same day.
I would agree.
It's only a few days away, so.
I'm probably just noting your, if you're making the motion, that it's out of the new table, out of the
Yeah.
highway and building maintenance table.
Alright, might be a long motion, because there's a lot in there. So this was a previous discussion related to the appointment of an employee with a promotion to a new position. So I make a motion that we approve the promotion of Cody Pease to the position of equipment operator, buildings, maintenance, labor, grade D, step 1, effective July 1, 2023, with an approximate rate of $27.25, subject to verification through the financial team of the town of Irving, utilizing the newly approved highway, building and grounds table that goes into effect on July 1. Got all that? I think I missed anything you need? Uh, yeah, actually, I did miss some stuff. I'm assuming we're gonna do a probation-
Have we, have we done all, on, um?
For promotions?
I can't remember now on that. Obviously contingent on successful completion of the CDL.
Six month, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh-
And the CDL in there?
Contingent on the, uh, subject to a six month pro, uh, no, contingent on obtaining CDL within a six month post hire or post promotion.
Second?
And a six month probationary period. Right?
Did you get that?
Friendly.
Bill, did you hear that? And, uh-
Subject to a six month probationary-
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. There was a lot in that motion.
As a paragraph.
New tables, new wages, new everything.
Your second stand on the amended?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Uh, thank you. Alright, back to joint topics. We'll jump down to the discussion of the IP mill demolition. Mariah, you're rejoining? Thank you. You got that, Brian? Mariah, come on. And so wanted to bring this back to have a discussion about what our plan is with regards to bringing this forward as a I think we still need to come back and finalize, I don't recall if we finalized which option we were gonna bring for an override, and then, you know, when and how, and how does that affect what we have for funding, right? Is it kind of high level, some of the concerns that I've heard and questions? Being the $600,000 that we have towards it currently.
So you had sent an email just recently saying that in reaching out regarding that $600,000, that they're not as long as we're showing that we're, it's still on the table and we're still moving forward, they're not setting a timeline of use it or lose it. So as long as, as long as we are still engaging in a meaningful conversation and making steps towards some solution, they're not stipulating that they're gonna set a date and pull the funding. So it's not a, a crunch where there was a thought that there might be a crunch of, you know, we have to do this very quickly or we're gonna lose over half a, half a million dollars, which nobody wants to do.
Yeah.
I'm not certain of where we fold in the IP mill, so I know I, I know your concern was where it falls in timing wise. We did have the public forum, and overwhelmingly, I think, all but a couple of people said, you know, they'd be in favor of a two and a half override for a capital exclusion, one time, putting it on a tax bill. So where we do that timing, does, are we planning on having a discussion of FY23 amended? Are we gonna fold it into that one? If we're not doing one, are we gonna move it to our longer range discussion of FY24 and beyond and, and fold all that into one larger one? Or is it gonna be a standalone topic? I don't know.
Just slight adjustment. You mean FY24 or FY25 and beyond?
No, because we had-
23 is over in seven days, three days, four days.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, sorry. Uh, to FY24 or 25?
Messing those up all night myself, too.
Yeah, I know, but sorry.
We're too close to the end of it, I think?
It's been a long day already. You are absolutely right.
Okay.
Adjustment to FY24, which we had talked about potentially doing. We haven't come to any sort of real fruitful conversation. We asked department heads to come back and, and look at that information. And if we are, does that make sense to reintroduce what was already talked about at that public forum that showed overwhelming support? That there would be a, a prop two and a half capital exclusion on whatever warrant we're creating if there's already gonna be an override for FY24? Should we feel we need to get there? I'm not ready to say that we're doing one, because I don't, we haven't even had that preliminary discussion. We've had the idea that we had made cuts and that we'd like to re-instate some of those cuts, but we haven't had any discussion on whether or not that would constitute a two and a half or not, and what that looks like. So I don't, I don't know where to go forward with that. I just, that was the groundwork of where we're at. It's a little, for me, it's a little early to say until we have that conversation of whether or not we're looking at an FY24 adjustment via override, whether or not we place this one in conjunction with that, or if we just make it part of the larger, larger FY25 and beyond. I'm leaning towards the FY25 and beyond, but I that's preliminary, because I haven't had any feedback yet from department heads on FY24. Yeah.
So you're talking two different things. You're talking override-
To replenish what was cut, then the, then an exclusion. So it'd be two separate articles then?
Correct. Yeah. Either way, whether we're talking about, uh, we've talked about long range plan, 20, FY25 and beyond, looking at potentially the long range needs of the town, and whether or not we would need an override anyways. But that is a very early conversation. We need to sit down with, you know, finance committee, the select board, the school committee, and look at where we're at in the, in the bigger picture, over the next, you know, five years or so, and, and what, what do we need to sustain? And can we do it within our current levy limits or not? And are we proposing an override to get there, to fill that need? I don't know, you know, based on the numbers, there's so many numbers flowing, you know, flowing around out there. We see anomalies every year. Once we start that conversation, I don't even know if we're gonna need an FY25 and beyond override. It's, you have to have that conversation before you can make assumptions on whether or not that, that's gonna happen. So either way, this would get flumped in with some override, should we need one, or it just ends up being its own standalone. If we find out that FY24 doesn't need adjustment, and FY25 and beyond doesn't need adjustment, we still had overwhelming desire from those in attendance that evening to create an override capital exclusion for this one item.
Personally, I don't wanna wait another fiscal year.
I mean, I think we should do it in fiscal year 24, and, and like Peter said, there's two things, there's two different things. And that's the debt exclusion and the two and a half override. So separate them out and, and take care of the IP plant with the debt exclusion and be done with it. And then you can just deal with the whole rest of it. And not that that's any small thing, but
Just a clarification, I, capital exclusion.
Capital exclusion.
No, nobody wants to pay a bank percentages on a, on a debt.
You got your fiscal year.
I know. Listen, I know, I just, you know.
I, I don't have them in front of me, but I feel like the second most favorite option was the longest possible debt exclusion we offered, uh, offered as well. So, and I've heard some comments after of people mentioning that, and I, I don't remember that we've all come to a decision on which one.
No, we didn't.
Or, or is there more than one option? So maybe, maybe either. But I mean, I agree, I, I think we should do it in FY24. One way or another, we should put it out there, and either it gets voted for or voted down. My I, I think it goes back to reluctance and agreement, I think we all had to not put it on the June coming up on Wednesday, is if we're going to do potentially any questions, concerns, or motion?
No questions or concerns. I'm on a roll, I might as well.
Go for it.
A motion to engage Allied Waste Services of Massachusetts, doing business as Republic Services of Springfield for the disposal municipal solid waste at the McNamara Transfer Station in Springfield, Mass. For a three-year term beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30th, 2026, with an FY24 disposal rate of $102 per ton, 5% increase in FY25, additional 5% increase in FY26, and to authorize Brian Smith, town administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
FY2024 electric vehicle charging rate.
So as the memorandum explains, we've gone back and taken a look at the current rates for supply and delivery. National Grid had a significant spike over the winter that we caught up to a little bit later after the implementation. So you had adjusted at late February the vehicle charging rate for FY23. Those rates have come back down. They're not scheduled to reassess their rates until November, I believe is the next time they change. And so at this point, they're back to something similar to what we experienced in the past. Eversource hasn't changed dramatically from when you looked at them back in February. So my recommendation is you could adopt a lower vehicle charging rate. Right now, you're currently at 65 cents per kilowatt hour. So we could reduce that, if that made sense to the three of you.
Brian, do we, do we know how much use the charging units are receiving from year to year?
I can send a report to the three of you, absolutely. Yeah. The nice thing about the software that manages, it's all, all four of them are on the same platform, so we can give you reports to show you by month, shows you what station, if one's more popular than another, we can send them up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Also identify ours versus internal use versus external consumers.
As you start to build up more of a fleet that uses EV charging, say you were to add more vehicles at the PD, we could charge those separately at a different cost center than we would a general public charging. So, yeah, we, we can set it up to drill down very deeply into the data.
Are we earning any, any income from this, or?
Right now, we're just trying to continue to break even.
Right.
Which is, I think, if we're being 100% transparent, that was the concern that we all talked about years ago. I know it's definitely something that some of the smaller towns who put these in using grants and other sources came to experience that there's an administration to all of this, that you don't really get to recoup in the, the fee that you charge. You really do have to stay on top of the rate changes from the supply and delivery. If we ever get to the point in the future where we've really locked in rates on supply and delivery, that may be something that helps stabilize these rates as well. But as these things fluctuate with the market, we have to stand top of it to adjust. And so there's been months that we've taken a bit of a loss, and there's other months that we've made more, so so no, we haven't made a profit off of of this.
There's also probably a balance between the rate and volume.
Absolutely.
Our rate is not very competitive, so.
There's that. There's also a fixed cost between the software that we have to put on here to manage the system, that if you can spread that over more users, incrementally, you start to earn more. If you have fewer users, that cost has to be absorbed by those few users. So there's absolutely a correlation to all of that.
So I noticed did you say there's G1 in your memo?
Yeah.
Is that just because they don't have enough volume on them to be under the EV G rates?
Right now, we're on the G1 system.
Okay. Because they have those rates that got approved last December? For each of them, for EVs, it was part of the 10-year EV agreement? They have discounted rates of G2, G3, and EV1, EV2 for Eversource? We may wanna see, I think it's because we don't have enough demand, like we have to exceed like 200 kilowatts to hit some of that stuff.
Probably.
But.
Because national, the national grid chargers are their own separate meter, maybe it'll be-
They have to be separately metered, exactly, that's part of it.
We're gonna struggle over here.
This one's not.
Right.
So it's not eligible, but
Right.
the bank over there of six.
Yeah. Yeah.
The G2, G3 are the new rates for national grid.
Okay.
I don't know if we hit the monthly and annual numbers. There are, you know, ranges of amounts, but it's worth looking at.
Do you have to consistently hit that every month?
It looks like for G2, we can't exceed 200,000 kilowatts a year, but must use 10K plus, 10,000 kilowatt plus.
Okay.
Per month.
We may not be hitting that yet.
That doesn't make sense. Filling demand of 200, no more than 200 kilowatt, but a monthly of more than 10,000 kilowatt. I think there's a little error in that. Must have been 10,000 watt.
Let me ask our Eversource and National Grid liaisons.
Yeah, this one specifically National Grid. And then the other, the G3 is greater than 200 kilowatt for 12 months.
Okay.
But they are special, they're demand charge rates that are for EV chargers only, separate metered, so
Perfect.
it should be more preferred.
Absolutely.
Might help. Anyhow.
Back to the rate.
Back to the rate.
You think the 50 cents covers our expenses?
At this moment, it would. Again, I think seeing the volatility in the last year and a half, we should probably monitor more than once a year. And so we can definitely schedule a check in September, October.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just before they do their-
Every quarter, every year, every-
Four months or something.
Right.
Okay. Is that, your motion to set that rate?
Motion to adopt the FY24 electric vehicle charging rate of 50 cents per kilowatt hour, effective July 1, 2023.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Brian, you, on number two, you have a- Brian, on number two, you have a administrative fee rate of 0.10 kilowatts. Is that included in the 50 cents?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. The only thing that we have to date not recommended was a parking fee. Some communities have high demand for their parking. Irving is not.
Yeah.
Most of that burden, so we haven't recommended that yet.
It's also if your banks are always full to keep you from just idling.
It's a nice way to keep people moving over.
Yeah, if you're not charging, you might want to not pay the parking fee.
Right, exactly.
Neither problem we have right now.
Correct.
2023 mutual aid police officer appointments.
So this is something you've been doing annually with Chief Hulse, and the recent partnership in the past year with the co-responder program has expanded the department's partnership, official partnership with these other police departments, and therefore, Chief is seeking your appointment of more mutual aid officers than we typically would have asked you for.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Give it a whirl. If I mangle any, please help me. Make a motion that we appoint the following mutual aid officers for a term from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024. Bernardston Police Department, Chief James Palmieri, Sergeant John Richardson, Officer Curtis Weaver, Officer Thomas Chabot.
Shabbat.
Shabbat, thank you. Guild Police Department Chief Chris Redmond, Sergeant Jason Basset. Northfield Police Department Chief Jonathan Hall, Sergeant Alexander Pierskoff, Officer Oleg Koliesky, Officer Chad Sumner, Leverett Police Department Chief Scott Minkler, Sergeant Stephen Gold, and Officer Christian Santiago.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I believe that is the last item on our agenda for tonight.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
None.
Motion to adjourn at 8:42.
Sergeant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.